Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Richard, our mission statement, please. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Thank you. A roll call, please. Yes? Here. Angela?
Here.
I'm here. Kyle?
Here.
Danielle is absent with no notice. Margaret?
Here.
Carrie?
Here.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. I motion to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? And opposed? Motion, Carrie. Did I miss the second?
I'll support it.
Okay. Thank you, Kyle. Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda item.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the consent agenda as presented in the attached documentation.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Walmsley?
Can you personnel report? There are several individuals I'd like to recognize tonight for their service to Richmond as well as our new hires. First, we'll start with the resignations and retirements. Jody Bartorgowski, she was actually hired on 9/7 and resigned and took another position in district on 9/10. So, though you never got to meet her, she did work some days, so we are obligated to pay her. That's why you're going to see her on the hire and the resignation section. Cameron Land, childcare, resigned. Kristen McCloud resigned as a science teacher at middle school. She took a position in another district. Megan Redoysik, took a third grade teacher at the elementary school, took another position in another district. Haley Reed, assistant cook. Notice on Haley Reed, the board approved her back in August. She has since resigned for personal reasons. And Jill Ruhlman, childcare preschool aide, also resigned. Our new hires, we have Cindy Arv, elementary cook. You'll see Jody Bartorgowski, again for the title one, who has again since resigned. Depp Dobbs has agreed to come back as a substitute bus driver, so she will be rehired by the district. You accepted her retirement back in June, maybe early August, but June. She retired. Kimberly Ellis, head cook at the food service department at the high school. Krista Falk, specialized teacher at Richmond High School. Vanessa Fuller, three-year-old preschool aide. Vanessa is also one of our custodians that works in the evening. You may have recognized her. She's looking to get into the preschool only childless center. Marie Christina Guerin, the culinary arts teacher at Richmond High School. Michael Gibson is here. He's the dean of students appointed. I'll give you a minute or two second. Carolyn Kuku, preschool aide. Have you recognized Carolyn, once taught or once was a preschool teacher? She asked to come back. She had to resign for some personal reasons back then, but we're excited to have her back. Daniel Molina is the volleyball coach, freshman, was appointed. We had the resignation mid-season or at the beginning of the season. Laura Autumnbacher, GSRP lead teacher. She will be our third teacher for the third GSRP classroom. Laura is also one that resigned for personal reasons and asked to come back or wanted to come back, so we're excited to have her back. Sarah Pestution, excuse me, the secretary for Richmond Middle School. Emily Patterson, although she was married, fall, but it hasn't really changed yet, but she will be social studies teacher at Richmond High School. She'll also pick up one social studies class at Richmond Middle School at the end of the day. Kristen Roseberg, a three-year-old preschool aide at the Early Learning Center at Lee. Haley Schwab, three-year-old preschool teacher. And Jamie Moore, also you had a resignation. She's come back to help us out as a substitute cook as well as train the incoming individuals. And then we have Brett Byrd, who was already hired by the board as the online alternative education teacher. He will be the CTE/social Studies teacher at the high school. So, we're excited. We've got some great new hires here. We have some people that have left that we're sad to leave, but we understand their circumstances and look forward to a great year. Mr. Gibson. For those of you who don't know, this is Michael Gibson. He's now the new dean of students, has been the dean of students for a couple of weeks now at Lee Elementary School. So, let's go over.
Hi. Glad to be back home. I graduated in 2004 from Richmond High School. I have a couple of kids in the district. I've grown up in this area my entire life. So, this, like I said in my interview when I was interviewing, is a dream job for me. I'm happy to be back and look forward to big things here in Richmond. So, thank you very much.
Excellent.
He has taken the bulls by the horn because we've been doing a lot of hiring in the preschool and child center, so I appreciate his time and energy to put in over the weekend especially. No, we have a great staff and we're looking forward to an awesome year. I did not have any questions regarding the minutes or claims and accounts.
Thank you. Ms. Shaw, I think, I know anyone doesn't know Brett Byrd is...
Yes.
Brett's here if he wants to stand up.
Do you want to say anything, Brett?
But now he's... Sure.
I'm sorry to say, I'm... I'm also from here. I'm Richmond grad and I was really excited to have this opportunity to take this new job. It's gonna be fun. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Any other discussion from the board? All those in favor? And opposed? Motion carries. Just want to welcome all of our new staff and have a good school year. It's always good to have Richmond grads come back and work with us. At this time, we're gonna have a bond update.
Well, we opened. We have our punch list and stuff to do, but the majority of this stuff has, obviously if you've seen the building over the summer, you knew what shape they were in and where we've come from now. From that till now is pretty remarkable. And I do want to thank the staff. You know, they may have their list that they've been keeping in each building of things that we gotta follow up in the punch list, but they've been extremely positive, extremely helpful. They have been... It hasn't been easy. I mean, there's a lot of stuff when you empty a building and try to put it back and do partial closures, the cabinets haven't arrived yet, or secretarial furniture that was still being built, but they did a remarkable job. So, where we are at this point is we are compiling the punch list item. We're literally going through each room to see, to make sure every light switch works, every unit vent, air conditioning unit works. You know, if there's molding that didn't get put on or edging, just starting to make that so we can start closing up projects and finalizing them. In the next couple of weeks before, probably in the first meeting by October, you will have the bid package to go out for these baseball, softball, and next summer, some of next summer's projects. That's gonna be our major projects as well as our parking lots, the student parking lot, the drive between the high school and the football field and the drive that goes in front of the middle school up by the library. And the middle school back parking lot will all be done next summer. So, we're not done yet, so I'm extremely proud of where we are. Except, we're not done, but we're open.
Okay. Our next agenda item is our presentations. So, we're gonna start off with our instructional spotlight and our Little Inventors.
And as Ms. Eric gets ready for the board members, there are two screens that hopefully by the next meeting we will have the projector, so you will be able to see what's up there. That way, the listening audience and the viewing audience will see what's up here, so...
Well, good evening, everybody. And I have two presentations tonight. The first one, I'm really excited about, and we have some guests in our audience today that are gonna come up and speak, but this is about the Little Inventors STEAM Challenge that occurred. The Macomb Intermediate School District in partnership with the Michigan STEAM Network and the Detroit Zoological Society helped launch Little Inventors, a program to help increase STEM education and promote innovation in schools. This was their first year launching this. Really excited they're gonna start again this year, and I can't wait for fourth graders to participate this year as well. So, this year's challenge was Mission Blue Oceans. And, fourth graders across all of Macomb County were invited to think up and draw invention ideas to protect the earth's water resources. This is called a Puffer Sub. This was submitted by Ava, who is actually in our audience this evening. You can see that the design was called Puffer Sub, and it's designed to float on the water surface, collecting pollution as it goes. Out of all the fourth graders who submitted designs in all of Macomb County, only a few inventions were actually chosen to have their inventions come to life. Richmond's very own Ava Vance was selected for this wonderful opportunity. Thanks to J.N. Corporation, who helped Ava's concept come to life, you can see the various stages the project went through to be developed. Ava had the chance to be involved with J.N. from the start to finish with the project. They would actually send her blueprints and figures that she had to approve, just like, you know, you would as an adult, and they then approved it back, and then they'd be able to see the progress of the entire project. We'd like to congratulate Ava. At this time, I would like to invite Ava and Ms. Charlevoix, Ava's fourth grade science teacher, to speak about their experience.
Hi, everyone. I'm Caitlin Charlevoix. I was Ava's teacher last year. So, just to be clear, too, it was around, I think they picked two people of around 400 students, so it was a really big deal. Yeah. It was super cool. So, the project as a whole, we were represented very well by Richmond. We, they even made a joke, they're like, "Any other school gonna get it besides Richmond?" And so, we showed up really well. There's also like runners-up who got little gift packages, so I felt like that's, you know, it was our students, they did an awesome job. But for Ava to get picked was just amazing. She deserved it, and it was so cool to be involved in the process. We got to have a conference call, and she kinda got, they got to pick her brain. It was with the MISD gentleman who helped us, and then the gentleman who also helped build the model. So, it was really cool. She got to, you know, have a say in all of it and then an update as well. So, it was such a cool experience. I was so proud of her, and she deserves it. Just a way to help the ocean, and it was really cool. Like I said, Richmond really showed up. So, I had a blast. I think you guys had a blast. What do you think? Yeah? So, it was, it was really cool. Anything you'd like to say about it?
I'm really surprised that out of all these people, I was the one that got chosen.
Well, looking at it, I'm not surprised personally. I might be a little bit biased, but I thought she did a magnificent job, and they were so pleased with her, too. She was like the face of the Little Inventors. It was kind of a pilot thing, and I got so many compliments on, you know, what her invention was, how she spoke and everything. So, I think she should be super proud, and I'm proud of her. And Richmond, you represented very well.
Yep.
So, you guys can see over there.
That is the real model. And on behalf of Richmond Community Schools, I would like to present Ava with the Richmond Innovation Award. At the time of Board of Education, Ava and her family and Ms. Charlevoix would like to stand by her invention to get a picture, and that would be great, too.
Plus, let's check it out.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ava Vance, and I'm 10 years old, and I had the opportunity to be a part of the Little Inventors program. We were given the option to choose inventions that would help the ocean, actually was pollution. My invention is called the Puffer Sub. The Puffer Sub is a submarine that looks like a puffer fish, and it helps clean the ocean. My invention helps clean the ocean by picking up garbage with a collar in front. The Puffer Sub also has magnetic spikes to pick up metal objects, but unfortunately, when they tried to put the spikes on top of the Puffer Sub, the stem broke off, so they didn't put on the... The Puffer Sub also has a net on the bottom so it can pick up trash and help other sea creatures. I was able to tour the J.N. Corporation where they made parts for the F-355 jet. They also made my invention come to life. They spent 30 hours preparing my invention. If I was to hire them outright, it would cost $15,000. I never realized how many hours a man pirate took to create one invention.
Power to the women. Right there. Very nice. You're going places. Absolutely.
Congratulations. Well done.
This will be a very good day for you. Oh?
It was top secret. I wouldn't believe how it came in this lovely box.
It was top secret. It was in a box in a hidden room in the high school.
It was.
So, nobody would touch it or find it.
Yep. And this, I will bring this over to you, because I know that some of the other fourth graders are gonna want to explore it and just kind of...
Absolutely. Yep. Yep. They all took pride in it. They were awesome for it and stuff. I mean, I told them what a big deal it was and stuff, so it was cute to see them, you know, and think they're almost as excited as she was for it, so really close your hands.
Thank you.
That's great.
The next instructional spotlight, and I'm going to invite Ms. Anders. So, this has been a bit of a passion project for Ms. Durst and I, to be able to work on developing and kind of enhancing our STEAM K-5 program. As you guys know, it is one of our specials for K-5 students that all of them get to experience. What's neat about our specials arrangement is that we actually have our specials eight weeks at a time. This allows for teachers to be able to go really deep with content, allows those relationships between teachers and students, and it really just kind of allows for this kind of culminating experience for the learning. So, I did create for you guys your individual little packets. So, I built this curriculum around the next generation science standards, the Michigan Integrated Technology Competencies for student standards, Michigan Computer Science Standards, the National Art Education Association standards, and the state standards for English language arts and mathematics. For each unit, the content standards are arranged in the K-2 span and a 3-5 span. You can see the standards are arranged in science practices, engineering practices, cross-disciplinary connections such as reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and the unit's big ideas. I arranged this curriculum into four units. Build It, Explore It, Create It, and Solve It. You'll see that there's a bonus segment for Present It, which is an accumulating events themed showcase. Build It is a unit focused on engineering and mathematics. Explore It focuses on life science and earth science concepts for each grade. Create It focuses on coding and robotics, and we did get a green screen, so expect some cute, fun things happening there, too. Solve It, which is gonna be an amazing culminating experience where students have to use what they've learned to pass a grade-specific challenge. Throughout your packet, you'll also see a unit overview and timeline for every single grade, every single one of those units. The overview includes the vocabulary, the activities and their durations, and the artifacts for the presentation STEAM showcase at the end of each mini-schedule for the special. I have sample lesson plans for you in the packet. You can see the arrangement of the actual content, it was very purposeful, and arranging the standards and units so that they build upon themselves in knowledge and standards as well as give each grade a unique theme and experience and learning. And the most fun page, I think, you can see all the different units that they'll go through the Explore It. Each grade has their own specific topic. And I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Durst, who's our STEAM K-5 teacher.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I first would just like to thank the board for your continued support and investment in STEAM program in our district. The benefits of this program for our students have so much potential. This is my fourth year as STEAM teacher for the district, and first year it was just at the elementary level, and then the next year we added on fourth and fifth grade, and so the hope is to eventually expand through the eighth grade and then expand into the high school as well. The past two and a half years, I've developed STEAM curriculum through island courses, through research, and through becoming a Macomb County Makerspace Ambassador, and then each year I made adjustments, additions, and issues to the program. Mid-last year, we had a wonderful hire here as curriculum director, and why I would say that is because I'm kind of a geeky nerd with all the fun things that I like to do, and now I have a partner that's just as excited and geeky nerdy with me with all the stuff that we do. So, it's been a lot of fun. We met several times last year and just really clicked with a lot of the same ideas and things that we want to do for the students. So, now I feel that it's, going forward, it's just gonna be even better than it was before because it has everything laid out, and of course, we're gonna, you know, touch back. You know, I'm gonna teach lessons if it's not, doesn't work out, or if we need to add to it, we'll, we keep in constant contact. So, it's, we're very fortunate to have her here with us, so I'm very excited. So, just a couple of things you may not know. Our STEAM program has received, I filled out a grant from Allen &amp; Products and Romeo. They do it a grant every other year, and I've received it three times so far, and probably about over, I'd say $20,000 worth of money towards things for iPads, little bits, dash robots, spirals, a lot of things. Whenever I can get any money, I'm gonna try really hard to get it, so the more money the better. The hands-on engineering challenges that we develop will create higher-level thinking skills, increase engagement, and problem-solving skills while students work in collaboration to complete challenges. We didn't talk yet about the badges, but there was a class that I took two years ago, a gamification in the classroom that doesn't solve the class, so it's where everyone, we're not gambling or running or anything like that, but it's kind of, where, you know, because it's where we do games, it's where you level up and you go on to the next thing. So, we're kind of gonna do a little bit of that in STEAM where as they go through each lesson activity, as they earn it, they'll earn a badge, and then we'll have like, yes, I should show them the badges. So, the kids will earn a badge as they go through each step of the challenge. So, we're excited about that, too. Just one example of a lesson plan, just so you can kind of get an idea of what's in there. This is called the Engineering and Minion Rescue. Who doesn't love minions? We all love minions. This is a Grade 2 activity. It takes about 10 days. Subject area is physical science and engineering. So, basically, and I'm really good at this, I love doing this, but you'll say to students, you'll say, "The minions are stuck on a deserted island." And then the students, "You have to, you have to do your research and create and test boats that can rescue the minions and get them back to land." So, kind of, that's a little dramatic, but you know, I'm good at that. So, that motivates them to take that challenge on, and then the supplies are given, and then they go there to complete the challenge. That's kind of gives you an example of one of the fun things that we have planned for them. So, we'll continue to develop this STEAM curriculum as we go through the school year and continue to be, to improve upon what we have started. Education's always changing, and by providing our students with experiences in STEAM class, we are preparing our students for the future. And then I want to close with, as we've seen here tonight with middle school student Ava Vance, who I'm so proud of, so awesome, that our students are being given a tremendous opportunity to learn, solve, explore, and present what they've learned that will carry over and enhance their learning in the general classroom. The fact that one of our students has had an opportunity to solve a problem, create a solution, and have her invention made is phenomenal. This is just the type of situation we are striving for for our students. Sparking the interest in STEM fields at an early age will inspire students to seek out STEM fields via college or trades. This is the only beginning of the awesome things that will be happening in our district. Ava is going to change the world one day, and our Richmond Community Schools family couldn't be prouder. And I'm just gonna leave you with a couple of quotes, if I can find my page on the government system, some things that kids were saying here. Just some things the kids said today, because everything was different. "Wow, this room is so cool." I know. Another, "I'm excited to be back. I love STEAM." And then, "I can't wait to come back tomorrow, and STEAM is awesome." So, when I hear all those kinds of things, I know that we're doing the right thing, and that's the whole concept. I want to be fun. When you ask kids what they like best, they don't say, "Lunch, risas, burger," I'm sorry, PE teachers, but I want them to say STEAM is their favorite after dinner. So, thanks.
And at the very end of your packet, you will see a personal invitation for all of you for our STEAM showcase at the end of our eight-week minis, that you guys will be able to come in and see some of the awesome lessons and things that the students are gonna be able to do. So, that's what I have. So, thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Very nice. It's very nice to see a curriculum, and it's all spelled out and meeting standards and things like that, so very nice job, both of you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're at the public comments section of our meeting. Since the last board meeting, I've received several emails from parents on various topics, pay-to-play names and comments from parents regarding masks, vaccines, and COVID testing mandates, mask on the buses, hotspots for early Catholic students, restorative justice facilitator, and Michigan Department of Health guidelines. All of these emails have been forwarded out to Mr. Walmsley, and they have been addressed. I would just like to remind our community that if you do have an issue or a concern, to please start with the teacher, and then from the teacher, go to the administration in the building, and then go to the superintendent. Most emails that I receive, I'm forwarding on because I do not have the answers to these questions, so just wanted to remind our community that. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please state your name, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments?
Good afternoon. My name is Callie Oldani. I have two children in the middle school. I want to thank you for listening to parents at the last few meetings. I think from what I was told today from my children, it was fully a choice of the students slash parents on whether or not they wanted to wear the mask and stuff like that, and I know my children were very thrilled just to be able to see their friends and interact with their friends and see the faces of the people that, you know, they've grown to love, their teachers and their friends and stuff like that. So, I really want to thank the board for that, and I'm hoping that we can continue in that sense. I got the packet today that they sent home, and of course, there's like the one page in there, the yellow page, it says, "Sign for the student handbook," and I was like, there's no student handbook. So, of course, I went on, and I read all 68 pages of the student handbook this afternoon because I wanted to make sure. I've signed things in the past where I'm just like, "Okay, sign it." You know, I don't read it or sign it, we sign it. Well, I'm learning now that we actually need to read the things that we sign before we put our names on them. My kind of joke is that that's how I ended up in the military, is I just signed my name. I really didn't read that one. So, on page eight, it does talk about the COVID-19 protocols, and it does say the procedures, all procedures in the districts. COVID prep and response plan must be followed. So, then I had to go back and try to find that actual document, and the last time I can see that it was updated was October of 2020. That was the last thing I could find, and I did go through and read all 116 pages of that again today. I'm assuming that we were in Phase 5 at this point, and if that is the case, Phase 6 is completely and totally open. Phase 5 was not the green, but like the red or something, I'm not sure. There were any strong, strongly recommended practices listed under Phase 5, but there were no required practices under the Phase 5. Those are including PPE, hygiene practices, spacing, screening, testing, athletics, and busing. Page 10 of the Board of Education, the Board of Education may require students to submit periodic health exams, which may include testing for communicable diseases. My question regarding this, is this referencing COVID-19 testing, and is this something that's going to be done on the premises? And if that is the case, who is providing this testing? Who is actually gonna be doing the testing? I wouldn't think that that's something that's gonna be done at the school, but I'm just... but I've just read the handbook, and these are the questions that I came up with. It does go on to say that "They shall notify parents of dates when any non-emergency invasive physical exam or screening is scheduled." The definition of invasive, according to the book, says invasive means "any medical exam that involves exposure of private parts or any act like an incision, insertion, or injection into the body." So this is a concern to me, and I'd like to understand exactly what this means before I sign that yellow piece of paper and send it back to school. On page 14, it says, "Parents have the right to review any instructional materials being used. They may also observe instruction at any class, particularly those dealing with instructions on health and sex education." Yeah, we'll just leave that there. I missed that whole sex education thing because of COVID, so my kids never actually got that. But I know that COVID restrictions have pulled some of the abilities for us to view or get into some of the classrooms. But I hope that the communications are open regarding the, any lesson plans or something like that, and that teachers would respond adequately if a parent was concerned about what the lesson plan was teaching.
Okay. I'm sorry. I don't need to interrupt you.
Three minutes.
For three minutes.
Oh, darn it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Good evening, thanks. I'm Shelby Paul. I've been up here a million times. It's good to see you guys. I just want to say thank you once again, like Kelly said, for listening to us, all of those parents over the summer and all of our concerns. And it was absolutely great to see all the smiling faces this morning. I know that my son and a lot of his friends were very relieved that they did not have to fight any of the masks or the screenings or anything like that. And he came out having a fantastic day, especially with this brand-new teacher. But thank you for listening to us, seriously. But one of the parents, before I came up here, asked me to ask you guys a question about one of the crosswalks on the main drag. She said it was the one crosswalk in between the ball equipment and the new parking lot. She was wondering if like a stop sign or a crosscar was going to be there. I told her I would ask, and then we can maybe hopefully get an answer at some point. So I just appreciate everything you guys have done, and hopefully we can continue to have a great school year. And thank you.
Thank you. Callie? If you had additional things, if you want, you could share them with Mr. Walmsley through an email or whatever. He can get back with you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other public comments? Okay. We're going to move on. Our next item on the agenda is superintendent and legislative updates.
As I mentioned earlier, today was our first day of school. I do want to thank the parents for their patience and their flexibility, especially extending the summer break for another week to give us time to put things back together. It is tremendously appreciated. So I do want to thank the parents. Today was a great day. Just to see the smiling faces on kids, the excitement. I didn't make it to every classroom, but I made it to every building, walking around. And it was just exciting, excited to see the kids, the staff, a new year. I ask parents, please be patient. There's a lot of cars out there. People are getting used to the new driveways and so forth. Just pack your patience, please. We don't want anything to happen. Over time, usually the number of cars does drop off. But just, again, pack your patience. From the legislative, there's not much going on, which is a good thing. We did receive some guidance on our ESSR III funds, so we'll be looking at that. If you recall, those funds were released months ago, and we've gotten some new guidance that we have to follow. I don't have any qualms or going to be in any problems or anything like that. I just, we're going to make sure we follow the guidance to make sure we get our ESSR III dollars, which is spread out over three years. Other than that, it's a great first day.
Great. Good to hear. Okay. Any items of interest from the board? We'll start with Kyle.
No.
Angela?
I just want to say welcome back. I'm excited about the year. And thank you to all of the staff, students, parents, and community members for being patient with us over this project. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sheri?
I'm with you.
Margaret?
Yeah. I just wanted to acknowledge some people who walked in the parade with us yesterday. We had teachers Caitlin Mangan, Jen Wolfe, Anne Durs, and Amy Barrett. Ms. Wolfe has walked with us many times, and I believe Mrs. Durs and Mrs. Barrett have not missed a year. And I think it's about our 10th year, ninth or 10th year of doing it. And thank you to administrators Renee Ara and Kathy Guinea. Did I say her last name right? Thank you. Our food service director. It's not a contracted day for you. It was a day off. But you showed great leadership in wanting to showcase our school district, and your positive attitude out there was wonderful. So thank you very much. It's our biggest PR thing that we can do as a district to get out there. All those faces, Mr. Simmons and I laugh every time we try not to walk by Mrs. Durs or Mrs. Barrett because the kids are screaming at them like they're rock stars, and we feel like, you know, we should just get out of the way and let the rock stars happen. But it just, it's just a great day. It's a great day to focus on our district, and it's nice to see that those people, that our staff, that get it and come out and are able to do it. And one last thing, I just also wanted to acknowledge Sean Misco. Sean's a teacher in the district, and he's our new varsity football coach. And for those of you out there in the parade, football players always carry the parade sponsor signs. And it's, I don't know if there's middle school football players do it, too, but all the way up through the varsity. This year, I'm sitting there, and who's come walking down the street helping carrying the sign with his players but Sean Misco? No coach has ever done that. And I just think that's a tremendous message to send out to your kids. I want you to do it, and I'm going to come do it with you because I'm part of the team. So kudos to Sean, and he made us look good yesterday.
Bridgette?
I just want to say welcome back to all of our families and to the staff. Really excited for a great year.
Good. I do wish to welcome all of our staff and our students back. And I agree, we hopefully will have a, no, we will, not hopefully. We will have a great school year. I too wish to thank those staff members and board members and anybody else who walked with us yesterday for taking time out of your schedule to be there. It was a lot of fun. We gave, we got rid of all the pencils and all the candy. So it was a great time. So thank you.
Mrs. Missha, I forgot our bus driver, Lori.
Oh, yeah.
Lori, who, my God, she beat that horn. She was on it, beating that horn and waving, and people were yelling. So thank you, Lori, for being our driver. That was great, too.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I am looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to Section 8 H of the Michigan Opens Meetings Act, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Support. Is that Margaret? Yes. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. This will be a road call vote. Kyle?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle, so absent. Bridgette?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The board will be going into closed session. When we return, we will adjourn because there is no other business.